Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease, available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the My Hingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
Okay, this meeting of the Select Board is called to order September 25th, 7:00 p.m. Participating this evening, myself acting as chair, Bill Ramsey has stopped traveling, so safe travels to Bill, and Julie Straley as well. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone recording the meeting? You are recording, okay. And Harvard Media is here, great. Okay, if you're willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Hingham Center for Active Living Program Utilization and Operating Cost Discussion. Tom, do you want to kick us off? Oh, sorry.
No, no, sorry.
Adcom needs to call to order.
Turns out we do have a forum, so I'd like to call the meeting of the Advisory Committee to order and adopt the language right away.
Excellent. Any other committees have a forum?
I think with the, we may have one with someone online.
Yeah, Vicki Donlin's online.
I've got your reading for the meeting of the Building Committee.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, Tom.
So this is just a, this is a conversation that I think has been pending for a while. It's our attempt, Jennifer's attempt at teaching the public about how this center in its current design will be used, or would be used if it were to be built. So our utilization plan, coupled with the utilization plan is the anticipated operating budget costs, so they kind of go together depending on how things are utilized. That determines how things can, would need to be paid for. So we're going to cover that as well tonight. And that's the operating staffing costs will be covered tonight. I just want to prep everybody, the utility costs, the energy and all that kind of stuff, that's all going to come Tuesday night when we get the full estimated cost for the center. They're kind of tied together about our values and walls and all that kind of stuff. So the architect and the OPM needed to get that information in order to speak to utility costs. So that'll come on Tuesday night. But tonight, we are prepared to, Jennifer's prepared to give her utilization concept and then subsequently the staffing costs. Go ahead, Jen.
Excellent, thank you.
So before we get started with the presentation, I just wanted to say that I'm using multiple applications to go through and tell the full story and give you information in a few different ways, so just bear with me as I toggle through the screen share and then stop screen sharing and then re-entering. So just ask me for your patience as we work through this. So today, as Tom mentioned, we're going to talk about utilization. And what you can see up on the screen right now is one tool that we're going to use to walk you through the nine highlighted scheduled programmable spaces that are at the proposed center. So this application is still being built out on the back end, but we thought it would be a fun, interactive way to share the utilization for you guys. And then we're going to work more in detail to build out the remainder of the schedule. So as you can see right now, we're really focusing on the one day a week, giving you a snapshot into what the proposed center schedule will look like. So I am going to get back to that and show you how fun it is in just a few minutes.
Fun's a strong word.
And here's where I ask that you bear with me for screen sharing purposes. Okay. So as I mentioned, we are here tonight to talk about the utilization plan. And the one that you're going to see is based on the current programming, not just used at the center here, but also used in Marshfield. Marshfield was used on a model because it's a South Shore community with a comparable population, both the general population and the senior population, and a newer center that's roughly the same size as our proposed design that the Building Committee is currently contemplating. Right now, Marshfield currently provides programming to 3,874 individuals per year against a total senior population of 7,232, so not too far off from where we are exactly. The proposed utilization plan projects the same usage against a larger senior population in Hingham and one that's projected to increase in future years. So for example, the demographics for Marshfield, currently today their senior population is Right now, our senior population is 7,188. The projected Hingham population in 2028, which is when we would hope to open this new facility, is going to be approximately 9,000, you know, give or take a few here or there. And just for our own all intensive purposes, we wanted to see what that number would look like if we removed all of the Linden Pond residents. No offense, I know I have some friends in the room that live in Linden Ponds, and you're more than welcome to join us, but for this exercise, we wanted to share that in 2028, if we remove Linden Ponds, the total population of older adults in Hingham over the age of 60 is going to be 7,600. So it's still just a little bit higher than what Marshfield is currently serving today. And this information, as you can see, comes to us from the U.S. Donahue Institute and MAPSIE. So, and having had reached out, thank you back to Linden Ponds, we were informed that they have no growth plans within the next five years. So we also anticipate that some of Linden Pond's residents will be users of our facility and programs. I'm going to turn this, I'm going to turn this slide over to Tom.
So we're, we're employing the old, the old adage, tell them what you're going to tell them, then tell them, then tell them what you told them. So this is telling you what we're about to tell you. The utilization plan that Jennifer's going to go through will cover this in a little bit more detail, but I wanted to summarize it so you have a sense of, of what you're about to hear in summary, in summary form. So the staffing costs that we're anticipating for the facility, there will be no additional cost to the HCal itself. So the projected costs that, that I see are one full-time maintenance worker that will be added to the town hall maintenance budget. And because then I have a team that I can disperse to different facilities at different times, they can work together, rather than a dedicated person that only knows that building. I'd rather have them be a part of the team. So that person will be working out of town hall, and they, if they choose to use our healthcare insurance, that would, that could run depending on the plan they pick and when they pick it, and family, individual, all that kind of stuff. You could end up with about another $10-plus thousand in, in costs to the group insurance budget. That's, that would be another annual cost. The additional annual cost is, would be the expense line for that role in the, in the custodial supplies specifically, and then also for any ongoing alarm monitoring. So we'll have obviously an alarm system as part of the building costs would be built into the building, and then there would be alarm monitoring every year that we do with all of our buildings. So there has to be an ongoing cost for that. So that would be incorporated as well. Those two things together are about $25,000. So between 60 for the, for the position, 10 for the, 10 for the group insurance cost, and then another 25, you're looking at, what's that, 70, 85, $95,000, roughly $100,000 in annual increases without covering the utility costs. Like I said at the beginning, we'll talk about utility next on Tuesday. All right, so without utility costs, you're at about $100,000 increase in the annual budget. Property support, just so this has come up a couple of times, all, any, any mowing that has to happen on site will be done, hand mowing will be done by the maintenance employee that, that works the building. So that's not something that DPW would have to do. But there's probably going to be a seasonal cleanup that DPW would come in and do, as well as any plowing, they would clear the parking lot for that facility should that be needed. Doesn't snow much in New England anymore, but we plan for it. But the, but so, I've talked to the DPW director and she said that those two items, the seasonal cleanup as well as regular plowing in the winter, would not be a significant enough increase in workload that would require additional employees. So it will be, you know, instead of seven hours to clear all the town parking lots, it'll be eight. So, so that's the, that's the intent with the, with the DPW support for this facility. Other operational costs, just so you guys are aware, again, utility costs on Tuesday, and as Jen summarized for me, that the HCal, but the programming for the HCal, the new HCal, will require no, no budget at all. Never has, doesn't now, and never will. The programming will be set and paid for by a combination of fees, the State Formula Grant, which again Jennifer can explain, and donations, as well as a lot of programs and staffing support that are needed for the program, for the programming are done by volunteers. So all of that comes at no cost to the center. So that's a big part of the reason why I'm sitting here telling you a $100,000 increase plus utilities, as opposed to a great, a much higher number. So anyway, Jennifer, why don't you take it away and run us through your...
Jennifer, can you expand the slide now, maybe enlarge?
I'm actually just going to leave that presentation for now. We're going to go into, as I mentioned, multiple different applications, but we'll go back to them at the end. We plan to close with one of those slides, so I'd be glad to blow them up for you. I'm just trying to figure all this technology out myself still, believe it or not. Okay, so we had, I had mentioned earlier that we have the interactive slide that will take you through, you know, a Monday program in each of those spaces. But in order to build that, this is a document, the program matrix that I've mentioned a few times, that we, we really had to build out with the intent of filling in the interactive model. So I'm not going to go through every single one of these rooms, nine rooms, five days, that's a lot of slides, a lot of information, but the spreadsheets were sent out to Advisory and some other members, Select Board and the Building Committee for their review before tonight's presentation. So each one of these little tabs down here represent a room that are one of the nine programmable spaces at the proposed center. Does that help?
Is that helpful?
Yeah.
No one falls asleep.
So, so looking, I'm not going, like I said, I'm not going to go through every, every single one of these tabs. The information is out there, we're going to build in the back end of the interactive slide as well, but to take you through, we have scheduled out what would be, right here, this is looking at our, our games and recreation room. So on a Monday, for example, you can see here we have Wist and Chess will be operating at the same time, that does happen at the center, we do have programs that coexist in spaces. And then you'd see that we have a 15-minute turnover period to allow for the chairs to be restored, you know, tables to be cleaned, cards to be put away and to move on to the next games. And we go through a whole day for each one of these spaces, but also in the, in this detail and in the interactive PDF you will see, we discuss what the fees are for programs, how they're funded, and the different funding sources, what the participation level for each one of those programs is expected to be. And you'll see that when we're teaching lessons, it's a little bit lower than we're actually having a whole-scale sort of club or card game. We also identify whether we currently offer the program, if we have offered it in the past intermittently, and if it's offered elsewhere. And you can see here, all the programs are offered elsewhere, and most of them, we have offered in-house at one point or another, but we did mention that we, you know, looked to Marshfield for a lot of their programming, which is proven, tried, and true over time. Now, for the folks at home that don't have this, I'm going to actually just start switching over to the interactive slide, but I wanted to give you a quick visual of what each of these rooms do look like. So here we have our Dirty Arts Room, and how that's scheduled out. You can see some classes will rotate, some are offered every week, and it goes further and further into detail. And we'll give an opportunity to ask questions at the end. We have our media room, we'll have educational programs in that space. Classroom. And the teaching kitchen. And I can't toggle completely through because we have our writing coming across the screen here. Look up, if you don't mind, that would be wonderful. Nope, not for me. Technical difficulties, bear with me. There we go. So I'm going to just switch on over to the interactive slide, so we can take a walk through that as well. So as I mentioned, we're going to build this out a little bit more in the back end. I'm going to start over here in the fitness studio on a Monday, and you can see that the schedule pops up for everybody to take a look at. So the first column here, we have the class, we have the fees that are associated with it and how it's funding. And as Tom mentioned, we have several funding sources, so everything that's highlighted in green is actually registration-based. So if you pay $5 for a class, we have 20 people in the class, we turn the fees over to the instructor, and they help to cover the cost of all materials and supplies with those associated classes. Everything that you would see that's highlighted, I'll skip to this one that has yellow, is a grant-funded program. So it's at no cost to us and all the benefit. We also have several programs that you'll see that are also staffed by volunteers, many of whom are in the room here tonight. And we also work with a lot of community partners. So between the volunteer base that we have and all the wonderful community partnerships that we've built, we're continuing to offer programs at no operational cost to the town. So here we have our fitness studio. Oh, it's going to build up. We did work through this earlier, and it worked flawlessly. I apologize for this. Sort of all came together at the last minute today.
Maybe if you could click on the Monday underneath the fitness studio, see the little top of the box that we've poking up?
I don't see it.
That's right, I think they get the point. The intent, the intent of showing this is that this is going to be an online tool that will be on the website, so you'll be able to go onto it and say, okay, I want to know what's happening at the center on Wednesday, and click on the, click on the different rooms that are, that are there for programmable space, and see what's happening and what's planned in that room. So you'll see that for all five days of the week, that the center is actively open.
And what I wanted to mention is that it's all the orange spaces that are programmable spaces, but there is still a lot of square footage in the center, such as the den, the cafe, the equipped fitness room, that are all public spaces and will be heavily utilized as well. A lot of our programs come to us as ideas by our members and residents, the community that want to volunteer. So when looking through the programs, you might see some gaps in time, and that's because we like to leave a little bit of space for somebody that might come in, like I use Glenn Mangurian as an example. A couple of weeks ago, he gave us a call and said, hey, you know, I'd really like to take the opportunity to teach some chess classes, which we've been looking for a chess instructor for quite some time, so we're able to fit Glenn in. You know, we have Jimmy that teaches floral arranging, Dick who's spoken all about, you know, his mahjong and bridge classes, so we do rely heavily on that, and I just wanted to make sure that I discussed that, if you see any gaps in the scheduling up there as well. So I am going to close this out, and do we have any other?
The, the schedule, for the operating schedule?
I can show that. So we've scheduled out five days a week from 8 o'clock until 5 o'clock, Monday through Friday. I know that that's been a question that's been brought up quite often. And... Oh, here we go. This is the screen that I was looking for. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to show that...
Can you zoom in on Tom?
Our current staffing level, we will be able to accommodate a five-day, oh, that was a lot, a five-day, eight to five programming schedule.
So again, that, the center, right now it's open four days a week. The new center will be open five days a week from 8 to 5, and what we're showing here is that the, the existing staff plus the maintenance person that I talked about are able to maintain that schedule. And then of course, there's volunteers and, you know, paid instructors and stuff that'll be in and out of the space as well. But the, that staff right there that you see is capable of keeping the center open five days a week, 8 to 5.
I just want to go back into the slides. I got here to the utilization plan summary.
Hey, you ready? Want to turn my eyes back on?
Oh, I can get them for you, I'm closer.
Okay, all right, excellent. Well, thank you, Jennifer, for the presentation. There's no doubt that you are an expert on programming and what the needs of our senior population are, so I appreciate all of that. Julie, do you have any questions?
I wanted to know, I had heard, and I'm not sure if it's on the plan that you put up on the screen, but if you can talk about a change to the admin space and whether there would be a new function put into that area for memory care, respite care spot for people.
What was the question I couldn't hear, sorry?
I was asking about a potential change to the administrative suite that I had heard that maybe that there would be a change in the number of offices and the layout of the plan, so I was wondering if Jennifer could show us what is currently proposed, which is to add in a new function, which is to do with taking in people who have memory care needs or a place to go during the day.
It's an interactive slide. I apologize for the technical difficulties here. Let's see if we can even see the space that's on there. Yeah, so the, the space that Julie's referring to is over here in the small multi-purpose room, that's what we're, we're calling it. And it was basically developed through, you know, looking at the efficiency of the space. You know, we heard that there were concerns around, you know, the size of the administration suite. We recognize that there's a need in the community to help address, you know, caregiver, caregiver difficulties. Where do you take somebody that you love if you need a break and you need to go to the grocery store for an hour? You know, there are similar models in multiple centers across the state. Yes, Marshfield has one, Duxbury, Middleborough, Plymouth, Situate, and the list goes on and on. So the need is continuing to be recognized, and I will say that one of the goals, and I think I even mentioned this, you know, six years ago, was to look at becoming, or having Hingham recognized as a dementia-friendly community, and that's something that we're hoping to achieve while, you know, going through this process. Some of the centers have retrofitted spaces to accommodate for the supportive day programs, including, you know, Situate. So they took a former program room and retrofitted it with a sink and some of the other utilities that are needed to make the space work. So what we're talking about really here is, you know, a program modeling after Marshfield, which would be three days a week, you know, for a few hours, like it's four hours that operates. A half-day you would charge $40, a full day you would charge $70. It would be self-funding, and it would help to meet a need out in the community. So that's really where we were looking at this in terms of like, what services are we missing that we can deliver on with the space that we're, we're talking about trying to develop here.
Okay, thank you. And then just I want to make sure that we understand, Tom, that when you talk about utilities that we'll find out about on Monday, that it's not just the, the cost of the operation of utilities, such as running the water day-to-day or the electricity, but that also next week we would have an understanding of the, the capital or the building cost of putting in lights to light the Bear Cove Park Drive and bring water all the way down to that building.
Yeah, those are all part, they'll be baked into the construction costs?
Mm-hmm.
So, but yes, they, I'm sure the OPM and the developer and the architect will be able to pull those costs out if that's what you're interested in.
Okay, great, thank you. You can go ahead, Liz.
Excellent. Jen, I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the programming funding sources? I know you touched on that, but I think that's a really important piece for people to understand.
Yeah, absolutely. Sometimes we get so far into the weeds in what we do on a day-to-day basis, I, I just assume that all of this is common knowledge, right? So the other day, when I was mentioned in a meeting that, you know, the 200 programs we're running a month, you know, 50 a week, actually cost the town $0. We've never had an operating budget for it. I don't foresee ever having one or needing to request one. And that's pretty common across all of the senior centers and councils on aging across the state, right? So all the programs were developed, you know, out of a need and, you know, funded through a variety of sources. So one, we have the municipal budget, which you're all well aware of. You know, we talk about our salaries and then what our operating expenses are. Currently, our operating expenses are about $23,000 a year, and the majority of that is for our transportation program to cover the cost of repairs, tires, fuel, and so on. I think we have about $1,000 for stationary, but we'll get into that shortly with the budget season. One of the other budgets that we are fortunate that we actually have access to is what's called the State Formula Grant. So that comes through the state budget, it's filtered through the Executive Office of Aging and Integration, formerly the Executive Office of Elder Affairs, and it's based on a calculation, which every year they determine, multiplied by the number of seniors that you have over the age of 60 at the most recent census, which would be 2020. So last year, we received an appropriation of $15 per resident over the age of 60, so it equates to about roughly $105,000. So when I started about 15 years ago, that was at $9 per person. And each town uses those funds for different reasons based on what their needs are. We actually fully fund our transportation coordinator out of that grant, so his 28-hour-a-week position at zero cost to the town. We also, the Council on Aging every year, which will go out shortly in October, puts out an annual appeal for donations, and we use those funds to help reduce any overall costs, which we would have to turn on to our members. So for example, if we were going to hire an entertainer to come in and we're going to provide a catered meal, I'm thinking about our Halloween party, which is already way sold out, so if you haven't signed up, you can get on the waitlist. You know, we'll charge, you know, $10 for the event, but you get a catered meal and entertainment. It costs more than that. So we lean on the donation fund and account to provide those services and socialization opportunities to our members at no additional cost to them. We also, and most importantly, I'll save that for the last, we have a recreation revolving event, very similar to the recreation department here. If you pay $10 for, you know, a fitness class or for a summer camp program for your kids, which is more than $10, they use those funds to pay out their staff, their instructors. But also, much like at recreation where it ebbs and it flows, if you have an increase or a surplus in those funds, you can actually hire staff to then provide more programming. So that's an opportunity that we've, we've had for a while, we continue, we will continue to fund our programs the exact same way, you know, at no real additional cost at all to the town.
Excellent. I thought I remember a program where there was like a stipend or some sort of kind of rebate per participant, so you had to track actually who was in the, in the classes. Does that exist, or has that been replaced by the State Formula Grant?
That might pre-exist my time here.
Okay.
It's not something that I'm familiar with, it might have been like localized to this center under the previous director.
Okay.
We do apply for grants at, you know, various different organizations. As you guys might know, I applied for $180,000 to purchase a 14... to purchase a 14-passenger shuttle van. And 80% of that was covered through the grant.
Right. Great. Yes, you are very good about that. But I think it's important for people to understand that State Formula Grant is based on residents of Hingham, not necessarily people coming to the center even.
Correct.
Or in a specific class.
It is 100% based on the number of residents in Hingham over the age of 60.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you for clarifying that. Tom, Carrie, do you want to speak? Or have anyone from the committee? I'm going to just call on the Building Committee and then AdCom, and then we'll take comments from the public. Thank you.
I would simply add, for those who might wonder, that everything we're talking about is customary in the Council on Aging world. The programming is all programming that other councils on aging do, other senior centers. They're recommended by the state agency that oversees it. For goodness sake, I just found out recently that Rockland has 43 programs in a week. So this isn't a situation in which we have created programming to fill something that we decided we were going to build. It's the opposite. The whole process through the senior center building committee was to get a sized building that was appropriate to serve the programming that we knew the town of Hingham deserved. Another point I want to make, because it can get confusing, is that there actually is a state body, the Executive Office of Aging and Independence. Name change recently, but the agency's been around a long time. They provide all sorts of materials and support for various councils on aging. They write reports. They make recommendations on what you should be doing. The governor just issued in May an update of the State of Massachusetts Plan for dealing with our growing elderly population. The long report, very heavy in talking about how much councils on aging and senior centers are critical to the state's effort. There have been other reports coming out. Healthy, Healthy Aging. The Healthy Aging Report actually goes through all of the communities in the Commonwealth, and it lists all the problems you could have, especially as you get older. And it has a chart that says, okay, what's this community like? And if you look, you can actually pull up Hingham. And I said, wouldn't it be nice to get a sense of how healthy or not we all are? Particularly since I'm getting to the point where I'm in that demographic. I was somewhat surprised to find in the chart, they broke out all the communities. It's all a matter of public record. You can look. All of the different kinds of conditions. And then the report decided, well, rather than just having numbers that are for the state, this is how healthy Massachusetts is, let's take a look at the numbers for each community. And they broke down, and they have a list of 14, of the best health, meaning healthiest, communities in the Commonwealth. Because they are the best in more than 14 of the categories of illness. Then there's the vast bulk of the state, which is average. And lo and behold, we've got a breakdown for Hingham. We are in the category of worst in the Commonwealth. We are on 14 or more of the types of things they're looking at for diseases and all of that. And Hingham has the benefit, we're not alone. There are others being worse. It's kind of interesting. You look at the map, and they get different colors. And you see that all of the communities around Hingham have better colors than we do. So the purpose of the senior center and its involvement with health and wellness, with exercise programs, with doing this, that, and the other thing, with being a resource where someone in the community can say, who do I call about this or that, is critical. These are not made-up reasons to build a new building. We had twice asked the Dunnehugh Institute, which is a state organization, to come in and evaluate Hingham's senior center. We did it in 2013. Situate did the same thing in 2015. Situate has a new senior center. We had to redo it in 2022. So we actually have two. Things got worse between 2013 and 2022 in terms of the population has grown and all of that sort of stuff. Every community that has built a senior center in recent times has gone to the Dunnehugh Institute and asked for an evaluation. And the reason they do so is because this is the gold standard of evaluating your community, its needs, and what you ought to be doing to take care of those needs for the elderly population in the community. We, of course, with the one we have, 5,000, we flunked across the board. I mean, it was just pitiful. Any comparable communities. They also don't look at comparable communities in a, in too narrow a sense. It's not like, what's your neighbor doing? What's Weymouth guy or Cohasset? They take a broader mix. And they base it on the data they have about how many elderly there are in the population. And they used comparable communities that closely resembled Hingham in this regard. We don't, I mean, we know from the report how bad we are. But I would urge people to look at that report to see the depth of the problem, what it is we're trying to solve and deal with. It gives you a good overview of what senior centers achieve. And these more recent reports that are coming out of the state, the governor's report, the Healthy Aging Report, the Aging Friendly Communities Standards, the Dementia Friendly Communities Standards, are all recognizing problems that are widespread, some specifically more to the elderly, and listing the various organizations that are involved in trying to deliver better services to the community. And in all of those reports, it is crystal clear that the first point of attack is your senior center. That's where people come. That's where they can get information. That's where they get support. This chart we had up here earlier with the little brown rooms, those are for specific kinds of things. But there are half a dozen other rooms in there in white, which are the ones that you will be sitting in if you're trying to get shine help. The ones you'll be sitting in if you're trying to get your taxes straightened up. The ones you'll be sitting in if you're trying to make arrangements for healthcare. The ones you'll be sitting in if you're trying to call a state agency about some problem. In, in all of this material, and most people aren't really familiar with it. But in all of this, when you look at how the state is dealing with it, they keep coming back to how critical the local senior center and council on aging in getting these services out to people in the community. So the value of having an appropriately-sized senior center that will enable us to deal with all of the needs is a given as far as the state is concerned and as far as the Dunnehugh Institute is concerned. They all want to see good senior centers. On terms of population numbers, I mean, are we building a building, and no one's going to come? Everybody in the trade will tell you, and if you look at all the communities that built recently, you build it, and they come. It's not guesswork. In both of those reports, one aspect of what the Dunnehugh Institute did was to issue a questionnaire and ask people in the community, what do you think you need? What do you want? And we've got all of that. This isn't guesswork about, oh, do you think maybe we don't need a media room? Media room is one of the critical things that's mentioned in every place. You've got to have a media room. You've got to have some fitness. What you do with a lot of the rooms varies locally according to the needs of the community. But in both 2013 and in 2022, there are appendices in the back in which people were asked, do you think this is important? Do you think that's important? And everything that we are designing the building for are the things and activities that you can find in those reports. What we're doing is implementing what the citizens of the town of Hingham want and need. And we're doing it on the basis of having asked them as well as having this wealth of information from the state about such needs. There's been some suggestion about generations. It's clear the elderly population's going up. That's the expert on it. But we've got about 30% of the town are over 60. The forecasts for if you get to 2050 would be 25 years after we approve this thing, go up. The percentage of elderly is high. There are projections from the state about what the South Shore is going to look like. They talk about Hingham. Nobody is suggesting that all the baby boomers and all the old people have somehow died off, and there isn't any need for a senior center anymore. The reality is it keeps needing to be filled, particularly with all the baby boomers coming. And so it's not guesswork about what the need is. There's a ton of data that supports it. Our committee, with the authority of town meeting, has spent the last year with our sleeves rolled up and digging as hard as we can to get a place that's an appropriate size, not oversized. We're not trying to build a Taj Mahal. To do it based on all of the data and the information and what you've heard tonight from Jen is just an inkling of how wonderful it's going to be when we actually get this. And look at the number of health and wellness opportunities that are built in this program. Look at, look at the wonderful social things that are built here. Look at the educational lifelong learning that a media room enables you to do. This is all not just fancy stuff that's a nice thing, but is not in any way necessary. Everything in all of these studies demonstrates how important and necessary this is to deal with well-recognized problems in our society. And so I just want the record to be clear, and it can get confusing. I've done this before. I've been at it longer than I should have been. But when I was on AdCom, when I was on other committees, when I was looking to build a fire station that the town needed, there was one thing you could be sure of. Whoever I go to, their first reaction is going to be, this is just the department talking, and they're trying to grab as much as they can. And it's instinctive. It's the town department wants money, and you say, well, they must be asking for twice what they're willing to settle for. That kind of stuff. That is not going on in any way, shape, or form in this project. We're not providing what our COA would like to have. We are providing what everybody in the business, including a whole bunch of state agencies, says is the appropriate thing the town of Hingham needs if it's going to take care of its elderly population. So that's all I would have.
All right. Well, thank you. Sure. Thank you. I do appreciate the hard work of the committee over many years. And it certainly is, has been a data-driven process, which is important. And I would ask that after tonight's meeting, the presentation from tonight, as well as some of the studies that Tom referenced, that we get those on the website. Because I think that is important information. Go ahead, Julie.
I'm sorry. I heard hard to follow Tom's remarks, but I did want to circle back to another question. I just wanted to go over quickly the funding sources for programming. There's three parts to it, right? We've got the fees, which you talked about, Jennifer. And you, Jennifer, you also talked about the Formula Grant. But I wanted to talk quickly, if anyone can give some examples, of the fundraising, which could be expanded. Because I know that we have the letter asking for donations. But other towns and other senior centers, or frankly, in Hingham, the Recreation Commission, you know, they're running different fundraisers. Like, everyone loves to run races. You know, could we do a run-for-the-seniors kind of race or something like that? But other ideas for fundraising to supplement programming budget?
So I'll start. Jennifer's the expert in this, but I'm just going to tell you. So Jen and I went to the Duxbury Senior Center a couple of weeks ago and met with the director over there. And she simply, she laid it out very simply. She said they raise over $100,000 a year, have since the '80s, on three main categories. They have an annual appeal, which we already do, and they do a golf tournament and a road race. And that formula, that model for them, has secured them over $100,000 annually for decades. So it's, it seems like a pretty solid model. Good news is, I also noted that they have to pay for the use of their golf course, because it's private. We obviously would not because we own our golf course. So throw that out there.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I would, I would add to that in term, if one looks at, at the how the thing is being run, there are a pretty good number of agencies that assist and do some of the work once the senior center puts them in touch, that are charitable organizations that have different kinds of sources of money. So a good deal of that kind of charity is already built into the background of some of what we do. It's always hard, we run into this at the library, it's always hard to be beating taxpayers over the head to contribute to something when they're paying bills. So it's a little bit dicey, but there- So it's a little bit dicey, but there are plenty of organizations and groups and places that you can reach out to. And frankly, a new building and better programming is probably going to help the fundraising as well. The report that has the worst, the negative information about Hingham, you know, we're in that worst category, actually has a paragraph that says that the communities that are the worst can probably expect more contributions and expenditures and stuff like that. So we're definitely ready to reach out to whoever reads that report and say, look at poor us, we need the money. But I agree with you that this, it's got to be done. It amazes me how much these senior centers are run for nothing. I do some public speaking, and I've been to senior centers. Couple of them I've gotten an honorary. I didn't charge arts for the talk I gave a week or two ago. But I know that fund is out of a fund for this, it's not out of the taxpayers' dollar. And the amount of volunteerism that you see everywhere, every place you go, is stunning. So we are already relying on a good deal of the generosity of people. And in fact, it's built into the system. If you read some of these state reports about it, one of the reasons being an age-friendly community is, and they describe, the number of ways in which the elderly are helping the community by being there and doing some of the things, including volunteering that they do. But on your basic point, let's try to raise as much money other than through taxes as we can. I'm sure the Council on Aging would be more than happy to do everything on that.
Yeah, that's a great point. Excellent, thank you. I lost Carol. Carol, did you want to say anything? This isn't a joint session, so I'm not planning on going around to everybody from the Building Committee or AdCom, but Carol, I'll give you a chance and then open it to the public.
I'm actually going to defer to if any of the liaisons who are closer to it want to ask.
Questions or comments?
I don't currently.
Okay.
Then I will ask one.
Do you mind just coming to the podium? Sorry. People at home won't be able to hear you.
Carol Tully, Tenheran Way with the Advisory Committee. Jen, thanks for everything tonight, the additional information. Question I have is, in the information you provided earlier when you had the Excel up, and you're showing the number that would attend each program, or the attendance in general at all the ones you've been to, do you have any data that helps us understand what you might? I understand the bill that they will come, you know, I've been around to see how that operates in some, but do you have any data that says how many, you know, how many participants a day do various towns get that supports the numbers that you have for how many you expect in each program?
So to answer your question, yes and no. I can get that information. I wasn't asked that specific question. What I do have that, you know, I can share, obviously, we've been working a lot with Carol down in Marshfield. She's been so great, and I just want to say this publicly, I'm surprised she hasn't slammed the door in my face yet for the amount of times I've reached out to her for, you know, information for various things. But we've been saying, you know, through the several meetings that we've had, that the numbers will triple. We're going to see triple the number of people coming in, triple the number of volunteers, triple the number of classes. And that's really based on, you know, what we've heard from other directors. But then when I asked her for the specific data, you know, how many people are you serving? How many programs are you offering that are unique? How many times do those programs repeat themselves? So that's what we call duplicated. And then I put those numbers next to ours, actually just did this the other day, and it was almost mind-blowing that it was almost exactly tripled for each of those. So she sent me her usage for two years post their expansion, so I pulled the same two years for our current programs. So for '22 to '24, she offered 817 individual programs that repeated for 11,000 at a time. So just to break that down, we have one congregant lunch that happens twice a week across four weeks, that's eight times a month, so that's the duplicated and unduplicated count. So 817 unique programs for them, we have 247. The number of members that they provide services to currently are 3,874 plus 2,000 guests that I'm assuming they probably took into their system at some point. And then for us, we serve 1,425 active members and 509 guests. So they're exactly triple where we are, their square footage when they built their original center, went from five to 11,000, it was 11,000 square feet, and then they added the 14,000 in 2020. And that's what tripled their numbers. So we really expect, our projection will be very similar, and we have no reason not to believe that. And add in my experience, you know, with the other center that I opened in Plymouth, or was part of the process as well, we saw the same, the same numbers. Great, thank you.
There also is data at the, just let me finish answering the question. There's data at the state level as well, the outfit that runs the Council on Aging. The problem is that the last fiscal year report that had this kind of data was 23, and it was badly influenced by the pandemic. But they do get from every senior center in the Commonwealth, an annual report that tells them how many separate individuals have come to the place in the previous year. And also will tell on duplication, sort of, how many people. If you're playing list and you come three times, well, that's a duplicate, but you were there three times. They break out so they know how many of the senior population are actually coming. And the percentages that one sees, generally speaking, as well as some of the percentages of people who said they'd be willing to come if they had a bigger place to come to and a place to park, in the reports on Hingham, were pretty indicative of a higher number as well. So yes, but the data is amorphous because of the problems with the pandemic. Generally speaking, the state indications are that you can anticipate, if you've got a good center, a really significant percentage of the senior community to be coming to it in one way, shape, or form or another. I'll try to see if I can get to. Since that report, they filed a report with the legislature, 2024 report, I'll try to get that particular data for you.
Great. Okay. I think Dick had a follow-on question, and then this woman has been patiently waiting in the background. Dick, go ahead. Did you have a follow-up question related?
Pat may be wanting to say the same thing, same thing I'm going to say, but I'll give the mic to Pat McAllen.
Thank you.
There are a couple of things I've heard.
Can you just say your name and address just for the record?
It's Pat McAllen. I'm a resident of Hingham. I happen to live at Linden Ponds, and that's one of the misconceptions. I don't understand why Linden Ponds is particularly eliminated. It's not that we have facilities there to play Duplicate Bridge, for example. There is a Monday group, we play in the cocktail area, no one from outside Linden Ponds is allowed to come in. So we, there are nine of us that travel down to Marshfield on Wednesdays. So out of 48 people sitting there, nine of them are from Linden Ponds, essentially from Hingham. So that's one thing I wanted to say. The second thing is that when I go down to Marshfield, you have to sign in. Duplicate is on the fourth screen. There's six to eight activities on every screen. The place is hopping. The place is hopping. And if the facility is enough for everybody to attend, they don't have enough storage space. So we play in a room that is adequate for 12 people, but we're really squunched because they have banks of gym equipment on the side because they don't have any place else to put it. So storage is critical. But any size you make this, it's not going to be enough. Please don't make it too small, because then you'll get what you paid for, and it won't be adequate.
Excellent. That's a great point.
The Dunne-Hugh Institute does not make any effort to break out how many people might be in a place like Linden Ponds in a community. They count the elderly population. I don't mind our committee giving this info out for everyone who's interested in it, but the state agencies that deal with this see no need to try to figure out how many are in the community in their home versus in the community in something like Linden Ponds. And I don't think we should be doing that.
Understood.
We ought to be reaching out to the elderly, whatever their housing situation might be.
Yes, and it's a great point, and I know Jennifer said it earlier. Obviously, everyone in Linden Ponds is part of the Hingham community, and it's absolutely welcome at the Center for Active Living. We are trying to be very conservative in our estimates because some of the objections that we're hearing, frankly, are the number, the demographics and the number of seniors in the community. So we're taking an approach of being very conservative and still showing that, yes, there is this need, there are this many people, and it's still growing. So that's the reason for that, but we don't mean to offend anyone. Go ahead, Dick. Just name an address, please.
I'm Dick Pontt, resident of Hingham for 48 years, lived on Holly Hawk Lane, brought up my two children with my wife. I'm now a resident of Linden Ponds. I've been involved with our 5,200-square-foot senior center for the last 30 years. I was part of the committee that 13 years ago recommended, based on state standards, that we should have a 20,000-square-foot facility. I have an answer for AdCom. Presently, we in Hingham have bridge games, and we have two days, three days now, we've expanded it to three days of bridge, and we attract either eight or 12 people at each one of these bridge activities. I go along with Pat and several others. She said nine. It's more like there's about 20 people from Hingham that, in addition to the Linden Ponds people, that go to Marshfield to play Duplicate Bridge. That game attracts 48 people, 12 tables of four. There's a game at Linden Ponds that attracts somewhere between 10 and 11 tables. We could do the same thing. We're going to have a room, we're going to have a game room. If it's, I'm not sure it's going to be able to hold 48 people. Hey, we'll do well with what we've got. It's a lot better than we have now. I am often embarrassed to say that I live in Hingham, because when I go to these other senior centers, and I've taught in Situette, I've gone to Situette, they were looking for a bridge instructor, I gave bridge instructions in Situette, I give bridge instructions here, I give Mahjong instructions here, my wife and I give Mahjong instructions, and I recruit other people. There's no lack of volunteers in Hingham. The point was made that we can do it with the staff that we have. We shouldn't have to, but we will, and we'll happily do it. We'll get the volunteers, we'll get the people to donate their time. This is a very volunteering town. I know a lot of people in town. I've lived here for 48 years. I know that we can have a very successful senior center. But we're long overdue, for crying out loud. This is drawing out, and we're being nickelled and dimed, and it just doesn't make any sense. People say to me, where are you from? I say, I'm from Hingham. Oh, you must have a beautiful senior center. I said, no, we don't. We have a nice senior center, we have a great director, we have some really good programs, but we'd like to have a lot more programs, but we just don't have the space, we don't have the parking. I know so many people that want to come to an activity, and there's no place to park. My friend Eleanor, she comes over here at 2 o'clock on a Tuesday afternoon to play Mahjong, which, by the way, we are attracting five tables of Mahjong players, which is 20 Mahjong players, 20 times four, on Tuesday afternoons on a drop-in. And people are willing to be jammed into the living room where other people are trying to read a newspaper, or they're trying to socialize and they can't because of the click of the tiles. But someday we're going to get there, but please, we need your support, we need your help. We'll raise money, we know how to raise money. We have plenty of people that are willing to work to raise money in Hingham. Don't worry about, you know, how are we going to, can we raise 100,000? We'll raise more than $100,000, believe me. Thank you.
We know you can. You're going to be, I appreciate that.
Tom?
Thank you.
There's someone in the back, I can't quite see you. Do you want to come up, or do you need the microphone? Don't mind coming to the podium? And just stating your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Joan Endike, 162 South Street. I have notes, because I'm not the greatest public speaker. I can teach a fitness class, no problem, but anyway. I was a fitness instructor at the senior center over 10 years ago. I started it. I don't work at HCal now for about five years. But when I started that, it was a strength and balance class, there were four people in the class. Within a year, there were 40, and they had to turn people away, and it was a bad situation, just wasn't any space for it. So, you know, people will come when there is programming there and there is adequate space. My primary profession is a dietitian. I taught a few nutrition classes at the senior center in the backrooms. They were really very small, and they had to limit participation, participation due to space issues there, too. Sorry, I really don't have a list, but. So my point is, seniors do want to participate in a center as long as it has adequate space. I think the most important issue, though, is parking. In my view, this is a really serious safety issue in Hingham that isn't resolved by keeping the senior center where it is right now. People in my fitness class were mobile, but many other programs, the stroke group, the health clinics, brought people to the center, you know, that can be dizzy on some days, poor vision, have walking and mobility issues, need to use canes and walkers. I observed unsafe behavior quite often. The lack of parking forced seniors to park on Burr Road or Central Street, where they had to navigate ice and snow. Some people would be crossing Central Street with a walker. I was horrified. I would wait out there and just make sure they safely got into the center. I really don't think this is the way we want to treat our elders in our town. Greatest generation, totally believe in that. I also experienced technology issues. When the pandemic hit, I tried to teach a hybrid class, and even though Jennifer called the town IT, they could not figure out how to get it to work right. I don't know if that's been corrected now. I don't know if it's an issue, but to have a new senior center with updated technology for people to engage in many ways, seniors deserve this. And then at this point, unfortunately, I know many seniors, I would And then, at this point, unfortunately, I know many seniors, I would say a good 25, that no longer use the center because of the lack of parking, because of the old infrastructure, because of the inadequate space, because it's too frustrating. So, I'm not sure if your participation numbers accurately reflect the population that wants to use a center. The last thing is, I think in Hingham, we can get creative with cost. I know someone brought this up at town meeting, I think it was a great idea, is to sell some property that's not in use right now. I mean, the North Street Fire Station, that would be prime property, right, to sell? I was also thinking about this space here. I don't know if you're familiar with, there's a, a group called SAIL, and I can't remember what the acronym stands for, but there's a lot of intellectually disabled adult folks in Hingham that have no residences, and they're looking for space to rent and have apartments for these folks. It would be perfect. Anyway, just a couple of thoughts for creative. I mean, I'm a taxpayer, too, but I think we could maybe get creative to offset some of the costs.
Excellent, thank you.
That's it.
Yvette, do you mind coming up?
Thanks, Joan.
Yvette Cantor, 442 Main Street. Jen, great job, as always. Jen, can you remind us, I don't know if it was blatantly stated, but for the record, what is the programming budget for the center?
Zero.
Zero?
Dollars.
How many years have you been the director?
Six and a half.
So, for six and a half years at least, we have run this center with a zero budget for programming. Yet, we're looking at programming costs. So, I'm not quite understanding why we're doing that, because the, the center has washed its face, either with a volunteer, a fee, or some other means. That's my first point. My second point is, what is the budget for the senior center annually? Tom, I'm going to test you.
In the ballpark of $400,000, $130,000.
What is the budget for the town?
$166 million?
I did $168 million, but even at that, it's .0029 of the town budget. I want to make sure the recording picks that up. That's what we're fighting over. Try again.
Do better.
Thank you.
And other questions or comments from people in the room? Josh, you want to come up?
Joshua Ross, 125 Wampatuck Road. I'll just, I, I also want to thank Jen and Beth. They've been asked to provide a outstanding amount of data and backup over the last months and weeks and years, and have continually given the answers and data more over than even asked. So, I just want to publicly thank them for that. The other thing I will bring up that hasn't been mentioned yet is that we have a work-off program in town, and I believe, and you guys can correct me, that there is a waiting list right now, because there's not enough jobs to provide the, the taxpayers who want to do work-off programs. So, this building will be a huge opportunity for those folks who want to do work-off programs, because I don't think they can do it in some of the other places that we've built, but this, again, if we're looking at every cost possible, I think it's one of the things that we need to look at. Thank you.
Great, great point. Other questions or comments from people in the room? Okay, is there anyone online?
Yes.
Did you want to respond to that?
Actually, I was just going to say I had to get the interactive slide back up and working.
Okay.
So, if there's any time at the end, I can do a quick run-through.
Okay. Is there anyone? Sure. John Deely? John, can you hear us? Please mute him.
Mute. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
John Deely, 14 Weathervein Court in Hingham, also the senior advocate for the Massachusetts Democratic Party. I have a question for the, for somebody in the group, and so, when will we know what the capital costs are associated with this project?
That'll be displayed on Tuesday night, or discussed on Tuesday night.
So, I have a question. I have built many buildings over my, my lifetime, and I'm wondering why there is this advocacy for, for challenging the size of the, the project before the project costs are known? Can someone explain that to me? Especially if somebody in AdCom could explain why there's been a push to reduce the size of this before we even know what the costs are?
It's an excellent point, and certainly, I feel like we don't have enough information to change the design at this point, or make any sort of recommendation. So, I, I hear what you're saying, John, I agree with you. I think next week, we will have a lot more information in front of us. What I am hoping, what will be presented are the fixed costs, the variable costs, so people have a really good idea of what the cost is to build, and any building of any reasonable size, and then what the cost per square foot is after that. And then, I think you can make some more informed decisions about how to optimize the space. We know the programming needs, we know Jennifer's an expert, we know the team has been working so diligently, Beth has been at this her whole career. We have a, a wealth of information in this room and, and experts in this room. So, it's an excellent point, and I think we're just trying to inform the public as much as possible along the way. We didn't want to wait till the end of September before having any meetings or public sessions, but we, that is, that is the elephant in the room. We don't know how much it costs.
Right.
And so, that will be the big discussion next week. So, our next, our next select board meeting is next Tuesday.
So, let's chill out until that happens. I'm an advocate of the senior center, I utilize it, I'm a member of the World Affairs and Current Affairs. The room is much too small for a number of people who show up to, to conduct those sessions. The parking is really difficult around the senior center, and so, I'm hoping we build something that the town of Hingham will be proud of. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think, I see Hillary, I can't read the last name from here. Hosmer, Hillary Hosmer.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm very impressed with the cost of the programming. I had no idea that it was zero. It's remarkable. I would like to raise some different costs that we haven't talked about at all, and those are the ecological costs of building in the middle of Bear Cove Park. When you cut down five acres of trees, there's a change in climate. It gets warmer. When you cut down five acres of trees, it's loss of habitat for all the birds that are there, and there are many. This is a wildlife sanctuary in a migration route. When you cut down five acres of trees, you lose the buffer space between all the athletic fields, including the new pickleball courts, and the, the birds. If you want more space, and I hear people saying, I do need, want more space and more room for parking, a much better site would be the golf range. It has, it's clear already, you don't have to cut down trees. It has not, it doesn't have the traffic problems which the entrance to Bear Cove Park has. And it would be a, a large enough and much better location. So, I'm saying that I, I totally approve of what the architects and the programming group has done, but for ecological reasons, it needs to move. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the feedback. And just to remind people, the location of the senior center, Center for Active Living, is not on the agenda this evening. We are going to try to focus on program and utilization. Are there other comments from people online? Questions or comments? No? Okay. Anyone else in the room, questions or comments? Do you have anything else, Julie? Okay. Did you want to add any? Do you want to try to show the slide?
Well, I feel like we put a lot of work into it. It was sort of like the big hurrah.
Okay, let's see it.
What I, what I realized is I can't click on the day Monday, because then it just freezes. So, I'm going to hover over a few of the days, one of which I want to highlight, speaking to Tom's reference about like the health and wellness benefits of a center, and 99% of what we do in a health and wellness atmosphere costs $0 again. Anything else would be recreation revolving. One of the programs that we've done every single year is offering, you know, flu and Shingrix, I can never say that, Shingrix shots, in partnership with the Hingham Center Pharmacy, or Stop &amp; Shop, or some of the other resources that we have, blood pressure clinics, so.
Can you close the participants?
Let me see.
I think Brittany can.
Monday. Okay. So, this is to give you an example of what we could do in a health and wellness room on Monday. Right now, it shares a space with our professional consultations, our shine counselors, and anybody else that needs a quick space to, to sit down and have a, a private conversation. The diabetic foot care, appointments last 30 minutes each. This is something that's replicated across many, many senior centers, and it was one of the first conversations I had when I came here with Sue Sarni and said, oh, you're switching your office around? Can I use your bathroom for this service? And it was not something that was feasible, but it is something that is highly utilized. So, it's for anybody that has diabetes and needs assistance with their own foot care. So, that's to give you one example. We talked briefly about the, the change, Julie, in, you know, looking at the restructuring to include a smaller multi, multipurpose room space. This shows the modeling after the Marshfield Center with their social day program, running from, you know, 10 to 2:00, and then there's preparation before and afterwards. We've also input some caregiver support groups in there. I've mentioned before, the, the Memory Cafe, which is an opportunity for loved ones living with others with dementia or providing care for, to get together and have a shared experience that isn't about a medical appointment, maybe sharing a meal together, or doing some sort of craft together that they can take home afterwards. The benefits that have been associated with a program like that are invaluable, to be completely honest with you. Let me find another space over here. We'll go into our, our classroom. I won't click on the Monday, but I really wanted to show this to the folks at home that might not have got to see a lot of the matrix that was shared out with some advisory members late last night, but looking at the opportunity in what, you know, be our classroom and demonstration or teaching kitchen, the, the support groups that we're going to be offering, that we do offer, that we can only offer once a month, because that's the only time they all share the same room at the same timeframe. Also, along with the World Affairs Discussion Group, which was mentioned by John earlier on the call, Buried in Treasures, Hoarding Support Groups, Digital Photography Instruction Club. These are all programs that we have offered and other centers do continue to offer, but we just do it so infrequently that the new space would be filled with, with the new programs. We looked at the, at the media room, you know, not in reference to what a personal theater at your home would be like. It's more like a lecture hall with seats that are suited for folks of a certain age who have been sitting down for several hours. Bridgewater Senior University, we offer right now, we partner with them, they provide program, you can attend as many university classes as you want to, all over the South Shore, in person, at a variety of senior centers, at Bridgewater State or online for $90 a semester. They offer over 100 classes, you can take as many as you want, it's a great value, and we're running two of those each semester. If you look at the lifelong learning programs that Marshfield offers, they're offering six, seven, eight each semester, and some of them are multiple sessions. So, I know that there was a question posed in the community about, do you charge for fees per session or per series? And it really depends on what the program is. So, I'm going to take you through the multipurpose room. We have a lot of involvement, again, with the community. We've stopped offering our space up to do blood drives, which is really unfortunate, but we have to cancel all of our programs in a day to offer that service back to the community. So, I won't go through all the slides, but I just wanted to really take the opportunity to show everybody at home what we've been working on and what's coming down the line.
Excellent, thank you for that. Other questions or comments? Okay, excellent. Well, great job, thank you. That was very informative, and stay tuned, we will continue the discussion next Tuesday. So, thank you for everyone being engaged and involved, and we'll hopefully see you next week. Next on the agenda, thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. If anyone has comments not related to this Center for Active Living, anything not related to the agenda tonight.
We're going to be done with this agenda in like a minute. If everyone can just hold tight so we can get through this, that would be, that would be helpful.
All right, seeing none. Town administrator and select board reports. Brittany? Tom?
Just one, I issued a one-day permit for the Hingham High School's 50th reunion this, on September 20th at the Hingham Community Center, from 4:00 to 9:00 for 90 people, and one police detail is required.
Excellent.
One's going.
Thank you. Yeah, that'll be a fun time. Julie?
Uh, no, I don't have any report.
Okay, I just wanted to announce that the Hingham Historic House Tour is this Sunday, and we're always grateful to the Hingham Historical Society for their partnership, and hope to see people this weekend. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this select board meeting for September 25th.
Second, roll call vote. Julie?
Aye.
And I'm in Iswell. We are adjourned at 8:26 PM. Thank you.